Committee meeting, I'll call to order this meeting of the Westford School Committee, wow, Monday, April 22nd, and if you will all join me if you're able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded, I forgot that in my lead up.
That is true.
So we'll start with a consent agenda, there's meeting minutes in the packet, payroll and expense warrants, general fund status for the month of March, budget transfers, and special education reserve fund transfers. Thank you for that memo Jenny.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Approve.
They both start with A.
Should we both just get like all of our word?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Chris, in a second.
Seconds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? Great, thank you. Five to zero. I don't have my right thing up, hold on. Next, we're going to move on to public comment. A reminder that public comment, for, we're a little early, for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always near, always available near the top of the agenda. For individuals to share their thoughts, speakers will be limited to two minutes per person, please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom, just raise your hand, and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted, or in person at the microphone in Millennium Room. We'll just give a minute to check Zoom, since no one's in the room with us.
Nope, I have nobody.
Okay. Great. No public comment. Must be nothing going on.
Spring sports are back, I think.
Spring sports are in.
We'll move on to informational updates, and we know Dr. Chu is unable to join us tonight, so we'll get from Courtney Moran.
We do have a few updates tonight, and welcome back to all of our students. We hope that everybody had a restful April vacation and are now ready to tackle our last eight weeks of school. As always, our facility staff and custodians did a great job working over vacation, freshening up the schools, opening the windows, and getting some deep cleaning done, so we are ready to roll in a big thank you to that department. And for at least three of our staff members, April vacation marked the conclusion of their marathon training. We had our very own Justin Mally, seventh grade special education teacher at Stony Brook, Olivia Antonelli from Abbott School, and Catherine O'Shea were three that, hopefully, the only ones that I'm aware of, I'm not sure if I'm missing anybody else, but they did run the Boston Marathon. And prior to vacation, the Miller School community did something awesome for Ms. O'Shea, and if you can see the picture in the background, you can see that Ms. O'Shea ran a lap around the Miller School. Her parents were in attendance, the entire school was outside, and with the help of Amy Parker, who is also a preschool teacher and a former marathon runner herself, all of Ms. O'Shea's kindergarten teachers were wearing marathon pennies as she crossed the line. And so kudos to these three runners, they had a lot of fun that day before April vacation.
Cute.
Arriving to school today, Christopher Lee was welcomed by a Littleton coffee truck that their PTO had set up, so that was, coffee is always appreciated, so a big thank you to them. Blanchard School is sharing that on March 9th and 10th, the Blanchard Theater Arts, May 9th and 10th. The Blanchard Theater Arts will be presenting The Night I Died at the Palace Theater. Tickets are available online and at the door. And finally, an exciting update from Jeff Bunyan, our athletic director, he's happy to report that Westford Academy had their first unified track meeting today. They hosted Acton Boxborough and Concord Carlisle, and the next meet is scheduled for next Monday when Westford Academy will host Lincoln Sudbury, so we're pretty excited about that.
Great. Wow, great, thank you for that update. We'll move on to the school committee updates. I'll start over here.
Policy will be up later.
That aren't on the agenda.
Yeah.
I would like to let people know that Westford Academy Theater Arts is presenting Nine to Five, the musical, this, starting this week, opening on Thursday, and so it's running over the course of two weekends, and so get your tickets, you can get your tickets at showtics4you.com, there's information on Facebook probably, definitely, and maybe, I don't know if it's on the website, but yeah, should be fun, a fun show, I haven't seen, I've never seen it, and I saw the movie like forty years ago or something like that, so I don't remember it, so this will be good.
Here's why I say, there's a movie? Just kidding, sorry.
Okay, oh yeah, I was like, yes, it's a movie.
I have a question for you, sometimes they do two casts, is it, do you know if it's one cast or?
I think it's one cast.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Any other updates?
Just an FYI, Town DEI meet tomorrow night, and I don't know if Sean is, but just the CPAC are meeting.
May 2nd.
There you go.
Yeah.
Those are the two.
Give him a chance, I was getting over here.
I know, I know.
Any other updates over this side?
Mine was taken.
Finance Subcommittee met the Thursday before vacation. We did update some Jenny, talked about some of the audit cycles and information on that, that was very important.
Yep.
Talked about revolving accounts and reserves, I know that's a hot topic right now in town circles, we also talked about the initial review of Policy 3401, student activities accounts and where that might go, and I know there's going to be some discussion tonight as well, so.
Great, thank you. My only update is a reminder that Saturday is town meeting. There's a deadline for onsite childcare, sign up by Thursday for ages five to twelve. There's also the Council on Aging van pickup and drop off transportation, that sign up is, also closes on Thursday. It will be on the field. There was, I was under the impression, had been told that how you arrive meant that you would like, you know, like at the PAC and the gym had separate clickers and, and separate ranges for the clickers, like the receiver. So the, originally thought that like how, they were going to have to section people by how they arrive, so like this part of the bleachers would all have the orange clickers with the orange hand stamps, and they've tested the ranges, and they don't think that that is necessary, so there won't be, we don't think that there will be like limits on where you sit, which is good, because I feel like people sometimes drop somebody off and then circle around for a parking spot, or want to sit together but don't always arrive together, so. But just another plea to carpool.
Oh, big time, yeah.
But the same parking satellites and parking shuttles will be available, cash pizza lunch is available, and registration starts at 8:00 AM.
Cloudy and high as sixty-two?
Yes, so bring an umbrella, a blanket, whatever you want.
It'll be chilly when we get there in the morning, yeah.
Hey Valerie, do you remember, so which, what are the van locations? Or shuttle locations again?
They're just, so Robinson Christopher Lee are the same parkings from before, but they're adding Abbott.
Abbott, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any from Cameron?
Not that I know of.
And it's not like you have to wait for one of them to fill up to go to the other, you can go to any of those three schools and jump on a van, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
I can confirm that with a logistics meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
But I believe so.
And actually also a note, a point to note, there's a lot of accessible parking at WA, so even though the parking lot may be full, there may still be accessible parking available at WA, so check first, even if you believe the parking lot has been closed.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. And we have no students, so I can't ask our student representative, we know capstones have started this week for our seniors, so probably keeping them very busy. All right, so we will move on ahead of, way ahead of schedule, to our First Order of Business, which is a update from the Department of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning, spring update with Mr. Gerard Coughlin, please join us at the microphone. We will queue up your slides, and feel free to dive in whenever.
Sure. Firstly, thanks everyone for having me here tonight, it's always nice to be back, you've, it's a great group, and I know this is something that we had talked about previously, when, one of the first times I was introduced, and just had a discussion that we thought it'd be really fruitful to come back together and just spend some time talking about a sort of departmental, where are we? So I have our slides set up tonight as hitting on a couple bulleted areas, just observations, so that's just obviously my observations within the district, what I've seen, areas where I feel really pleased to highlight and discuss successes, and then of course we have areas for growth, areas where we can work together as a district and as a department to improve. And then sort of the last piece I tied in there too, was some of our long-term planning, and what we'd like to do as a department for our future, and what our vision is. And then really the last piece, just sort of going off some of the guidelines that you've always worked with as a school committee is, you know, sort of what does that all mean? How do we get there? It's, you know, it's always good and nice to talk about big ideas and sort of use flowery language, but how can we really get there? And I think we as a community know, and we as a school committee know, that there are obviously some restrictions and challenges to get there. We're in a really, really difficult position, and so it's up to me and our leadership and our department to find out how we can best utilize our resources. What can we do to utilize state grants, federal grants together, to just sort of evaluate and find out how we can best use those funds, and take some of these, take some of these big ideas we have and make them a reality. So that's what I've been thinking a lot about, I will say one of, I'll start with an area of growth, I think one of the easy things to say is, you can have big ideas and then get into the position and realize how challenging it is to enact some of those. And I'm sure you feel the same way as members of a school committee, as an assistant superintendent, so.
That's a universal.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I find that when I'm trying to put my.
Especially in election season.
Yeah, exactly, I find that when I'm trying to put my children to bed.
Big idea.
So, so we all have these sort of, I don't want to call them pie in the sky, but I'll, you know, I'll steal lines that I've heard other educators use, but like wishlist. And I do think that we can get there, and we can get to, we've already experienced some really tangible gains, and we've experienced some great things that have, I don't mean to use things, we've experienced some great initiatives here in the district, and not only initiatives, but just some areas of education and the special education and social emotional learning department in particular, that we've been able to enact and make happen. So just to go over specifically, you know, I know we do, we do have, you know, a set amount of time, so I don't want to spend too much time talking, and I also want to have just some time for questions from you as a group, if that's, if that's necessary. So for me, one of the special education and social emotional learning departments, some of my observations, I've, I've worked hard to get into schools, I've worked hard to meet as many people as I can, I've worked hard to just try to meet parents, and most importantly for me, students, that's what it's always about for me, it's great seeing students and children. So for me, the number one piece is just the wonderful talented and thriving students I've seen at all levels here in the district, regardless of level of disability, regardless of the students in general education or special education, I've observed classrooms at all levels in every school, and it just makes me again so thankful to be a part of this district, and to be a part of a group that was willing to include me in this district. And just the students we have, it's been unbelievable. I love get fielding the questions when I go into a classroom, who are you? When you're at some of the lower grade levels, and, and that brings me back, that's a really important piece for me to be able to interact with students, it was something I did so long, so if you have really young students and they told you they met Ken from Barbie, that's just, that's just what I was telling them, so. And then second, second to that, I've been so happy and so pleased to just meet with, and most importantly, work with, and I hope for me, gain the respect of our wonderful, talented and bright faculty and staff here in the district. I've been so lucky to meet with the teachers, the specialists, the team leaders, the administrators here, I've gotten to know many of, many of our, many of our talented staff well, and it's been really great that they've accepted me, and not only been open to new ideas, but been willing to say, yes, I like that too, yes, let's do that, yes, let's make that happen. And so when we do talk about elements related to budget or hiring, there's that sort of collective effort to be, to be and know and understand that there are challenges, but what can we do to meet those? So it's been really, really great, and I know I've learned a ton from our team throughout the district, and, and I've been given ideas that I would never have thought of, or that I would not have known about, and different levels of resources from outside support, community support, and potential candidates to hire, all of this together, and I just can't say enough, I wish I could go through the list and say everyone's name in the Department of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning, because it is really, really a talented bunch, and the district is in really, really good hands, and, and I'm really proud of the group we have here. And then in no particular order, it doesn't matter if once, first, second, or third, I've also, I cannot appreciate and cannot stress enough how wonderful the community and the parents and caregivers have been here in Westford. I cannot tell you how many emails or phone calls have started off with, Gerard, I know how overwhelmed you must be, Gerard, I know how difficult your job is, and can we talk about this? And people are just so understanding of the challenges that face education in 2024, and the challenges that face educators, and at the same time, I know how deeply the community cares about their children, and how deeply the community cares about their students here. So it's really important for me to hear the voices that are out there in the community, and to meet with parents. I know myself, I would like to meet parents even more. You know, Chris, you just got, just discussed nine to five, you know, I'm hoping Jane Fonda shows up at it. But that's a great example of a place I need to get better at, to go to, to see that, to see our, our amazing and talented students, and also to just get a chance to meet parents and be out there and be a little bit more visible in those ways. I really miss going to high school sporting events, which was something I did frequently, and those are some of those sort of like, you know, pie in the sky things that I thought I'd, I'd have much more access to, and, and I feel like in future years, when I can build my own schedule and understand my role, then I'll have so many more opportunities to do that, but that's really important for me, and I just can't stress how kind parents have been, and how wonderful parents have been to work with and to work with collaboratively, and that's the most important word. And, and then lastly, I just wanted to mention with that group, our leadership team at every level, you know, I know we've had in recent years, some significant turnover with that, working with team leaders, special education leaders, assistant principals, principals who are in their first year, second year, you know, we have a number of principals and assistant principals in that role, and not only have they been so welcoming of me, but I've been so welcoming of their talent, abilities, and willingness, desire, regardless of their role, to put a focus on special education and social emotional learning, because building principals have so much to manage, and I would never want to say that they prioritize one, one thing over another, but they put a focus so intensely on special education and social emotional learning, and it makes my job so much easier, and also makes me feel that the community is in such good hands with that level of leadership. So the next slide, we'll just talk a little bit about successes. One of the things that I feel most proud about, one of, one of our largest successes, one of our, one of our greatest accomplishments, accomplishments, has been our enhanced social emotional learning support throughout the district. We know of course the title changed, and we wanted to have much more of a focus on that. We know Dr. Chu's philosophy is that sort of a core element of our teaching and learning here in the district, and he frequently uses the phrase bookend, and, and I totally am with him on that and support that. I did have a link on here that, we may be better off looking at that just sort of more independently, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the institution of our cartwheel program here in Westford, which is a sort of interface to allow teachers, counselors, any sort of student, any sort of student support at the school level, to be able to seek out, search, and recommend any sort of community-based therapist, psychologist, social worker that students might need. And the statistics on that have been tremendous, we've recommended a number of students, we've had a tremendous success with that, we do have a cap on that number as to how many you can recommend, and we've almost achieved that. And more importantly, and what makes me most proud, is there's sort of a screening process that, that occurs with that, and our team, our educators, our families, our academic teams have so, have so, I have identified so well and so successfully students, that all of our students recommended have been picked up for some level of service. And that is not, that is, that is to praise the team, and to know that everyone involved was like, or believed that, yes, this student is in crisis, is in social emotional crisis, and we have the supports here. Starts with the parents and communities who are willing, and caregivers who are willing to take a risk, and it is a risk, to be able to share that and bring that to schools, and then it starts with, with, with the school staff, counselors, support staff, social workers, who are able to work together to get those students the support they need. Secondary, secondary to that, our continuing, continuing role with our Community and Behavioral Mental Health Committee, which I am now a part of, we meet every third week, and that is a tremendous group of people, that includes members from, from, from the district who are involved in mental health, it includes members from the police department, the fire department, and then also there's a parent group, and it's been a tremendous, it's been a tremendous committee to allow us to try to find ways to support students outside of school, and just to work collaboratively with all members in all departments within the community. Another, another element we're really proud of is our continued training and use of what's called Panorama, which is a software, it's a social emotional learning data collection tool, and we would like to continue utilizing these types of software to make sure we're checking in with students daily, even if it's, even if it's built into the curriculum and brief sort of check-ins, if it's built into the curriculum as part of morning meetings at the elementary level, as part of advisory at the middle and high school levels, we really want that or some form of that to be a part of what we're doing to support students, and help identify students who are having challenges socially and emotionally. And then the continued development of our day school, social emotional based classroom, which was begun in earnest before I came here, so I cannot take credit for that, by parents and teachers and administrators working together to identify students at risk, and finding a program that was really successful, and we're going to bring that back next year, it's going to continue to be a success, we're working together as a district to identify students who would benefit from that program, and we're really, really excited about the development of it. It's great to see that in year one, it was such a success, and we just want to continue to build on that. Another area of success I feel like has been some of the increased transparency and access we've had to the department, we've been able to create office hours that occur every Thursday, and there's always, there's always minor snafus that come up with that and could come up with that in the future. This Thursday, I have an out-of-district training, professional development that I'm to attend, so unfortunately, those are canceled for this week, but it's really been wonderful, parents have been able to utilize that, and I feel like any word we can get out more about that, or we, that any, any sort of more information we can pass out to parents about that, has been really successful. We have an online link for families who may work and may not be able to come in person, and we also have the option to attend in person. We've also tried to rotate it every other week with mornings and afternoons, so that a time can fit members of the community, parents and caregivers. We've also worked really diligently to take part in CPAC meetings, I try to attend all of those, and just be a part of all of the CPAC meetings, the, the, the great community that is CPAC, we've had some wonderful turnout this year, I think our numbers, according to, this is anecdotal, I know our team likes data, but anecdotally, we've heard that the numbers to CPAC have been higher this year, and I think that's great, and that, that has little to do with me, it has more to do with the team of, of leaders within CPAC, it has to do with the great options they've, they've given to parents and caregivers in the community, in terms of professional development, speakers, and access, a couple weeks ago, we had a, we had a great session, might have been two months ago now, a great session with myself and Dr. Chu, and just really allowing this access to everyone, I think has been really important. And then for me, I just know personally, another area that, that, you know, I've missed, it was always a part of my career and my life, is just attendance at meetings. I know and firmly believe in our team leaders, in the academic team, in the process, and so much of what they do is beyond anything that I could ever do, the district, the, the special education department could ever do, everything happens within that team. So by no means would I ever take credit for all of that great work that happens all of those days that I'm not a part of those, but if there is a request, if, 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 if the team feels that it would be beneficial to have me there, I try to attend every single one of those as asked. And oftentimes, those are generated by the team as well. A team leader may say, hey, we have a question, could you come to that and attend that? And that's an area again where I've always felt really comfortable, and I've always really enjoyed working together with community and parents, to be able to make those team leading, meetings a success. So additional, just sort of, oh, I said that already, success is continued access to the department, don't know why that doubled up, we just talked about right here, the first meet, the unified track and field, what a success that has been, I know it was a long time coming, it was a long time coming here in Westford, again, it started before me, I cannot take credit for this, this is the work of, of, of administrators, our wonderful athletic director, parents, community members who pushed for this, students who desired to have this, so that has just been, that, to hear today how that went is tremendous, and that's an event that I myself have to get to and have to be a part of, and that, again, it shows, you know, great, you have leadership, you have a director of special education and social emotional learning, but I can't be successful without a team of people who are working together to make these great events happen. The hiring of coaches, the recruiting of, of, of coaches, the coaches who wanted to participate, just everyone working together to make that happen, I'm really proud to be a part of that. Then some other, I feel like successes have been broadening of programs across the district, we have a language and literacy support program at the, at Christopher Lee, which we may tweet the name of or tweet the title of, but we've really worked together to try to identify some students who have challenges within that area, and we feel like that, that has been a tremendous success. Also the expansion of social, social and academic inclusive learning classroom at the day school, which we talked about a moment ago on the previous slide, but just continuing those types of programs, in trying to look at ways which we can support every student at every level of, of, or every need within the special education department, and address all learners here in the district. And then another area I'm so proud of, that I can take very little credit for, because it was, the wheels were in motion before I was here, was the creation of our eighteen to twenty-two program for the 2024-2025 school year. A great example, it couldn't have happened without the school community and without the community advocating for that, knowing the importance of that, so I thank you tremendously, I thank you, I thank Sajil Costa, Dan Toomey, who've played such a critical role in making this happen, and who've had the vision to be able to understand how valuable this can be for any community, and what we can do together to support our students who will need that level of support after, after their time at Westford Academy is, is done. And I've seen the results of these eighteen to twenty-two programs in other districts, and we will get there, and we can get there, and it will be, it will be a wonderful, wonderful program that we will be so proud of for years to come. I feel like another major area of success for us has been our new IEP rollout readiness, many, many families, teachers, faculty, staff, community members are concerned about the new IEP and what it means, we have a much better handle on it than we did September one, and I can say, I can say with some. I can say with some level of confidence, we don't have to worry that much. It's not going to be as bad as everyone thinks it's going to be. It's going to be longer, it's going to be in landscape. Who puts things in landscape? No one knows. But that, that's something that will occur. But I know, again, that together, um, our tremendous staff and families will work together. Will there be road bumps with that? Absolutely. And, um, that's to be understood. We, we've had some great training on that and, uh, we continue to hope to build on that. And make that, that rollout as successful as we can because I understand the level of anxiety. Something like, something, a change as large as that can bring to parents and teachers and faculty. It's been, for those who don't know, I think it's been twenty-three years since the IEP was changed. So, um, so this is a big deal. This is a big deal. Um, you could conceivably say some teachers went their entire career without having a change in that document. So. Some desired successes we have for moving forward is, uh, just continuing to build our SEL programming. Include, increase our reliance on data throughout the curriculum and the school day. And what that means is utilizing some of that software, trying to identify, um, even when students are having a challenging day. Or, um, a challenging short period of time with their social emotional learning. Grow our push-in and co-teaching of our social emotional learning, uh, and we'll talk more broadly about, um. Push-in and co-teaching momentarily. But, um, I took a great course on co-teaching earlier in the year. And, uh, the instructor stressed that co-teaching doesn't always have to be a teacher. It doesn't always have to be a general educator and a special education teacher. It can be a counselor, it can be a specialist, it can be a speech pathologist. And those are the areas where I'm responsible for thinking creatively about how we can best use our resources. Is there a way? And we know so many of our staff are overworked. And that we, we're asking them to take on so many new responsibilities. I don't want to do that. I instead want to say, hey, is this responsibility over here, could it be more successful? If we used a co-teaching model to help you out with that. Um, and those are decisions that, that I would never make unilaterally. And would instead want the support of, uh, our faculty, our staff and our community. And lastly with that is just increase our professional development opportunities for social emotional learning. I've heard feedback from teachers that, and I forget about this and I thi- I think we all can, we probably can in our own jobs as well. We can go a long time sort of before, uh, like in between sort of training we get in one area. You know, for any one of us, it can be, it, it, you could say, uh, just to try to make a silly analogy. Say you're using Excel for your job and then you leave it for ten years and you come back and you, there's no, you can't use Excel again. So I think for us, we sort of really put a push on social emotional learning years ago. And then maybe have we lost some of that, um, have we lost some of that professional development and training? And how can we best reevaluate that and look together to see what our teachers need and what our teachers to want, uh, what our teachers want for that? Continuing with desired successes, I'd like to evaluate the need for more diverse special education programs. I'd love to enhance our co-teaching programs, um, and support our language-based learning students, uh, as best we can. I, I feel like, um, the data and the tea leaves that I'm reading for the state. There is going to be a, a, uh, what I feel like will be a pretty strong push towards moving to, uh. Back to, I should say, that co-teaching model. And really allowing for some of that push-in to occur in classes. And really look for that, um, sort of least restrictive environment that we, that we talk about so frequently in special education. And, um, then again, this could be pie in the sky. It could be just me trying to think positively. Expanding our unified, uh, sports. Um, the track and field started today, you know, maybe I'd, maybe we take one bite at a time. But how great would it be to have, uh, basketball, baseball, softball? I know other districts do that. And, um, I would love to see us continue this. And I know that's a big ask and it's a lot of, it's, it's a lot more funds, resources. Just sort of community support, coaching support, staffing, all of that. But it's something I'd love to see for our students, um, in, in special education. More sort of specific, long-term areas for growth. I would love to have even more transparency, uh, within the community. And, um, I've thought about, you know, the office hours are great. Is, is there, uh, is there even more I can do personally? And I've talked on here before, uh, Dr. Chu and I have joked about a, a podcast, a YouTube video, um, something like that. I know some districts do a newsletter, are those elements that I, um, I could develop within the department? To just get more information out there and just trying to be there for parents and community members and, um, and, and even students. So that's something that's really important to me. Um, continuing with that, I'd like to have, as I just said, and I know I touched on this, so I won't, I won't. Be the dead horse, but just an increased presence for me in school, uh, schools and school-sponsored events. I think with any of us, we, we have these, uh, we have these really phenomenal ideas about what we can do and I blink and it's four o'clock. So, and, you know, the schools have closed and I'm not there. So, um, I know that that's something that is a personal area for growth for me. And an area that I can get much better at. And, um, most importantly, it's something I love. So. Uh, and then just providing a better understanding of what is available to the community for special education services. And what I mean by this is just having transparency for, um, for community members, parents, students to understand what it is we offer. To have parents and families know we have co-teaching models, we have language and literacy, literacy support, we have social emotional learning. And so how can we best deliver that? Um, I definitely have heard and would respond to that that is a potential area of concern. Well, I didn't know you had that or I didn't know you have, had this. So how can we do that better? And how can we be more transparent with that? Building more and more support for our children and like I said, exploring co-teaching models, exploring programs to meet every child at every ladder, uh, level. Support students with chronic absenteeism. Courtney Moran and I have been part of a committee at the high school who's really looked closely at this, um, this year. It's really, really challenging, chronic absenteeism. There is no sort of, uh, magic elixir for that. And there is, uh, and I know again, we, we, we very much like data. And, um, there's not a ton of data about how to address chronic absenteeism. And I think for us, that's going to be a collective movement going forward. Are there more earl- uh, more and earlier interventions we can do to prevent that? But it's really hard when it gets to a specific spot. And, um, I just listened to a podcast about this two weeks ago. About, uh, it generated, I think in the Wall Street Journal or the New York Times, that it's pervasive throughout the country. And, um, I think that what makes it so difficult is that no one has great answers or no one has great ideas. But because you read that in the paper, doesn't mean we, we pack up and don't try anymore. So, um. And then just continue to study best practices for social emotional interventions. That's a little bit of what I was just talking about. Can we identify some social emotional challenges earlier? Are there ways we can support our younger students? I know younger students throughout the district who, who have anxiety and who are experiencing their own forms of absenteeism. That saddens me beyond belief. And there are ways, I, I would love to try to explore ways in which we could improve that. And then, um, I know there's a subcommittee that is, is somewhat, uh, tangential to this last one here. Is just evaluate alternative forms of discipline. Um, it's really important to me. That is very clearly going to be a push from the state. And I think that's going to be something that we're going to have to respond to. Um, and what does that look like? You know, what are the best models? How do we keep our, how do we keep our faculty and staff and fellow students safe? In, in, in situations where there may be disciplinary sort of actions required. What can we best do while at the, uh, while at the same time keeping the child, um, focused in, in keeping the child first with what we're doing there? Then just continue to support faculty and staff. It's really important to me to, and I love this phrasing, uh, let's just say I got a little help from a friend. Partnering with, uh, district colleagues. I, I think that that's really important. It's been really important to me to gain and earn the trust of our faculty here. And I would like to partner with our colleagues to make sure that we have more meaningful and tangible professional development. I know that's a buzz phrase and a buzzword, um, and I would love to continue to get feedback on that. And find out what are the best ways we can use those days that the committee has worked really hard to establish in our calendar. And so I appreciate that. Support staff on social emotional instruction. We talked a little bit about that. What can we best do? For those teachers who've maybe haven't had some recent professional development there. And, um, uh, partner with staff to balance all professional, um, uh, responsibilities. Anything from service delivery to evaluations. We did this year work really diligently as an administration to support teachers through the evaluations. This will all make sense to you. We had a massive increase in both three-year and initial evaluations this school year. And if you do the math from the pandemic, you will come out to, this has now been three years since some of those evaluations started. So if you're familiar with the three-year reevaluation process, you will know now is the time. That we're getting so many more of those evaluations that were initials, um, during the pandemic and during hybrid learning. When, when students very clearly, again, data-supported, very clearly lost learning hours and, um, lost education because of that. And, um, the faculty and staff were great at working together with, with that. And, um, coming up with a way collaboratively and collectively to support, um, uh, teachers who are having a difficult time. With that overwhelming ask. Um, and then also too, just, just, um. Make sure we're looking at best practices for consultation with gen ed and special education staff. And, um, really, really continue as we get into next year. None of us have actually written one of the new IEPs yet. But we're going to and we're going to have to start to do that. So what can we do? One of the goals I have for that is to have some school-based, um, quote-unquote, experts in that field and be able to have. You know, some of that train the trainer model that I know, uh, is a commonly used phrase and one that can be successful. And so what can we do to really support our, our staff there? And more importantly, our families who may get nervous about what that document is and what it means. And, um, do the changes result in a change of services, uh, which they won't. And then lastly, supporting to, supporting families, responding to CPAC assessments and data. They're currently, um, in the process of, or maybe have even begun rolling out the survey.
Survey's closed.
The survey's closed. Excellent. So now we're in this sort of data collection piece. It's going to be really important for me to respond to that and see what that data says. And, um, and then just looking, are there ways we can use community resources? I know I mentioned the, um, the, uh, mental health, uh, committee that I'm a part of. What can I do there to make sure we're really working together and passing that a lot? And passing that on to community members. And then the last part I had there, and it's true, communication, communication, communication. Um, I want to be out there responding to people's questions and concerns. This year, when we had some challenging events, it could be an individual student where there was a potential crisis. Or there was, um, just a potential really difficult situation. It was really important to me to get to meet those parents, to get down to meetings. To be able to speak with those parents, um, apologize for any errors that may have been a result of, of something I did. As the head of the special, uh, Department of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning. So that's something that I would like to continue to do. And, um, the same with faculty and staff. And, uh, I try my best to do that so that we can work together. Uh, lastly, I have just a few long-term plans here and wishes. And like I said, uh, so much here is, is just sort of like broad topics. But staying committed to transition programming, uh, for all graduating and aging out students. Making sure everyone has a clear understanding of, of the new IEP, a sense of all that Westford has. That comes back to what I talked about. What do we have for our programming? What do we have as part of our special education resources? I want that to be open and transparent to all. Another piece that, that's been really important that, um, the, uh, the, uh, Buildings and Grants Department has been great, uh, working with me on. Is partnering with facilities to work towards adaptive playgrounds for all and, um, and what we can do there. Working together there. I know there are options potentially for grants and, um, and just working together as a community for that. I talked a little bit about, uh, interventions before, services, alternative forms of discipline. Those are really some of those, uh, ideas that, that we love to have. Uh, for faculty and staff, it's releasing that, uh, pressure valve. Making sure they have a comfort with the new IEP. Um, I'd love to try to make sure we have the proper specialists everywhere. Could we ever explore, um, uh, and we talk about this together at the administrative level all the time. We, we, we talk about looking at what we have and what's available, um, and, and how that could potentially just sort of change. Could we potentially have a BCBA where there's a potential, where we might think we need a special education teacher? But could we hire, uh, a BCBA in that position? Could we hire an adjustment counselor in that position, a social worker? Without, by the way, any increase or change. That, that's a, that of course, I think tonight goes without saying. But I want to make sure that we have those resources and specialists everywhere, all of the time. And, um, I would love to decrease travel between schools. What does that mean? What does that look like? How can we collaborate together to have, um, uh, building-based specialists, building-based reading specialists? So that, um, we make things most successful for families and students, but also for our professionals. Who do sometimes have a hard time with that travel time. That can be really hard. You may have to cut short a session somewhere to get to somewhere else. And, um, and that's something we'd love to evaluate as, uh, as well. So, let me wrap it up by just saying, what does this all mean? For me, the Westford Department of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning is in a great spot. It is in a great spot. And we have, as I said, such a tremendous group of students. While I don't have in front of me specific sort of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four numbers. Our graduation rate for special education students is phenomenal. I would like to see that at one hundred percent. Our, our rate of, of special education students attending colleges is also phenomenal, just the levels that those are at. And that comes from a combination of, of students and their drive and their desire. And their willingness to not accept a label or to, to overcome whatever challenge it is that they may have. It's a willingness and desire of parents to work with, with the district, with schools, with teachers. And it's the willingness of, and desire of teachers to not let students say no and not let students say, I can't do this at any level. And our teachers here do not do that and they do not participate in that. As we saw by some of my observations about areas we can, or where we can grow. Are we perfect as a department? Am I perfect as the, um, leader of this department? Absolutely not. And so I think it's important for us to just continue to move and grow and be open to different ideas, different thoughts. I have, and again, as we settle, as, as, as I've fully settled into this position and can have an even broader vision into what, into our second year. Talk about, are there ways we can see other programs in other districts? Are there ways that we can utilize, um, our professional development time to do that? Our, our, um, planning time, our professional, uh, development days that teachers are allotted, all of that together. So just really working collaboratively, not only here as a group, but as educators and just educators throughout the state. And, um, and just seeing what works and hearing what works. And, um, take chronic absenteeism for one. We have conversations about this in leadership with other districts all the time. I'm sure you folks have it as parents. No one has a good answer. But if we continue to talk about it, research it, study it, find out what we can do. Then I think we can get to some places, um, where we potentially feel like right now we can't get to. And part of what I want to be and my desire to be is sort of make that, make that desire and hope. And positivity, something that just sort of spreads throughout our faculty and throughout our community. Because this is a great place. There's great students, there's great parents and there's great teachers. And, um, and there's a great school committee. Who supports so much of the work that we do. Um, any questions?
I'll start with thank you. Um, that was an awesome presentation. I really appreciate the format of it. Covering from successes and growths to the big picture in the sky. Um, and I'll open it up to any reactions or questions, Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Gerard. Thanks for being here and, uh, a well-rounded presentation. The, the chronic absenteeism, do we have any like hard numbers on that? As to what Westford's been doing? Have we been trending up? Cause I, I'm very aware of the, I think most of the committee members here are aware of the, what you were alluding to. The New York Times article saying that nationally absenteeism was up for students, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I don't, but let me look. And, and let me find that out to you and get back to the group here, um, together. And there should definitely be a way to just be able to track that and look at it. I know different regions of the country have different, uh, have different sort of absenteeism rates. I know different regions of the country have different have different sort of absenteeism rates. And I know that the Massachusetts and Northeast is a little better, but that's a totally valid question. And I can definitely try to chase that down and look and see, is it a little better than it was two years ago? Is it worse than it was two years ago? So I think that that's a really important question to ask. So let me do that.
Courtney, do you know, have we ever tracked that?
Well, the state does, and they're starting to do so more. You know, and because clearly is a big issue. Why the state thinks it's a huge phenomenon coming off the heels of a pandemic where we told people to stay home. Is a little bit mind-boggling to me. So it's just really getting that mindset to let people know that, no, no, we do come to school and you are going to be safe and and this is the expectation. And so we did have a little bit of a snafu in our own data collecting with Power School where we were marking students, you know, absent several times because they weren't going to each one of their Westford Academy classes. And so Kathy Mucci helped this year with Westford Academy, understanding exactly how we need to do that. So our data is cleaner. So the data that we're looking at this year might look like it's a little bit more elevated than what we would expect for next year. But the state does go ahead and define what they feel as though triggers that chronic absentee percentage.
Do you do you have an idea, like a rough, like how much time has a student to have missed? Is there a, is there that kind of a?
Date, like 17 days? Right, I believe it's 17 days or 10% of their learning time. Yeah, so.
Yeah, you're correct. So the state breaks it down into two tiers and it's by percentage. So it's 10% or 20%. So one is considered, there's a, there's a slight nuance in the language there, but yeah.
And and even though we have different reasons for a student being absent, excused, unexcused. The state doesn't necessarily look at that. They're looking at this as students not in school. So for whatever reason.
I believe Boston Public Schools are kind of attempting a new, I heard a podcast or something recently. They're almost like marketing school across the city. They're they're attempting over the coming months.
Try school.
Yeah, it's it's some really out of the out of the box thinking there.
Billboards and stuff like that. It's like.
Because people weren't aware. People weren't aware about school. That's interesting.
They missed that law, right?
Almost like if you know a friend who's not coming to school, like there's things you can do. And so there's, yeah, it'll be interesting to see what.
It's a strange, I mean, I, you raised a really good point, Courtney, right? Like because this is coming off of the heels of 2020 and 2021, which was just throw any of those data points out the window, right? But it's not like we as a district or at least in Massachusetts, it's not like dropout rates are higher, right? Or?
Our dropout rate has not increased. I mean, we have a small percentage. We still want to. You know, to Gerard's point, no matter what it is, we want to continue to work with those numbers to make sure that the students are welcomed back each year. In fact, there is an outreach effort that we do for each student that might have dropped out but are still, you know, age appropriate for high school that will reach out to them each year, hey, can you come back? What are you doing? How can we help you with your GED and putting those resources out there? There have been at least one student that I was aware of this year that did come back and is continuing to pursue their education. So that was definitely a win for that individual.
Thanks. You know, to to touch on that, and you mentioned Cartwheel and Panorama. And, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, data is important, but you also want to target. What are those touch points or those conversations that you can have with students, with parents? Or with faculty about, you know, what are those things, those pressure points that are constraining a kid from coming to school? Or that service not being met? Or, you know, those, I I think figuring that out, and this is going to be a multi-year process, I think, you know. This is, your energy and enthusiasm should be commended and heralded throughout this district. But you also got to approach the long game and and not burn yourself out. And I think, you know, just some of that, that feedback that you receive or or, you know, your teachers, your ESPs are receiving from parents, from students, just, you know, logging some of those qualitative points, right? Putting that together, getting a sort of, you know, shape and form of of what this feedback looks like. You know, communication, you know, we had two students here who put a fantastic flyer up on the at our last meeting about our S-stip. But, you know, how do we communicate what is the Department of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning across the district? Can we pull kids from WA and other schools to help to help us do that? You know, as a as a work product, you know, as 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 a real-time application, I think that communication piece is vital. Especially when, you know, we're having conversations as a committee with parents and other community leaders about, you know, what are our schools doing? You know, they're not, they're not serving every kid. Why are these kids, you know, but we are, we are, you know, right? So.
Yeah, and and thank you, Bill, to respond to that because you made a couple excellent points in there. I think it is, it is my vision and one that is shared by school administrators, particularly by Dan and his team and Sajil Costa, that we we definitely have to explore different options to educate every student. And, you know, does that, does that include looking at, are there ways we can look at virtual classes, summer classes, credit recovery, things like that? So if there is, there 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 is some positive data around students who have experienced chronic absenteeism, and then what happens when they do come back, they tend to flourish. So the key is really allowing that student to come back and have them not feel like they're a year behind. Or they're a junior in a freshman class, I mean, an 11th grader in a ninth grader class. My counselor wife would yell at me for using junior and freshman. But an 11th grader in a ninth grade class. So all of those things together, I think is really important. And I love what you said about the long game. And the most important part is I think that there are enough, there's enough momentum where people are seeing the long game and are not saying, you know, it was WA who came to Courtney and I to to evaluate the chronic absenteeism and start this this committee and look at what we wanted to do. So there's, there's plenty of momentum to to sort of make this happen and and start to increase rates of if if ours, you know, have dipped, but, you know, obviously we hear, like you said, the qualitative sort of narrative and data around chronic absenteeism. So, yeah, those are great points. And I and I do think that there is a a firm belief and energy amongst all administrators and teachers that it's something we can attack.
Comments, questions?
Might have a few.
Do you want to let Chris go first?
Do you, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. You talked about better bettering our social emotional learning supports. And then right after that, you talked about alternative forms of discipline. And so that brought to mind for me two of the things that have been percolating this year that came out of our ARPA funding last year, which is restorative practices and collaborative problem solving, which were, you know, we we submitted, we we got funding, this was before you were on board. So the briefest, you know, we got funding from the ARPA monies that the town received. We had to go to the select board and ask, you know, we put in a request for a number of things, but those were two of the things that this committee specifically went. You know, in conjunction with the administration to ask for, and they were meant to complement, you know, the the things we're already doing well in social emotional learning, but really directly to talk to social emotional learning supports and alternative forms of discipline because of the the changes at the state level and just because of best practices. So I would just encourage that there's awareness, both with you and the folks that you work with, that that's happening, very early stages, collaborative problem solving is, we're just kind of starting to get underway. And but we've already been doing some restorative practices, training with staff at the middle school and high school level. Because, you know, even going, speaking to chronic absenteeism, you know, I think a lot of, especially restorative practices. It's about building a supportive nurturing community. It's about students feeling seen and understood by by their their teachers and their peers. So that that school becomes a place where they feel safe and they feel welcome and they feel seen. And so I think it's, there's exciting possibilities for those that we could, that we could really continue to expand and grow on in the next few years.
And and we're not on alone in that. I mean, as Gerard, and we've discussed earlier this year, Desi has really come behind those those approaches to discipline. I mean, they've made grants available. I know you were working through that whole process and stuff. So it's, it's not like this is something that we're just throwing out there.
The state is telling us.
These are very well-established kind of practices that the state is.
Yeah, that writing is clearly on the wall. But but Chris and Catherine, thank you both because I I do think that's important for me to remember. And then on top of that, how does that filter down to our staff? Because we say alternative forms of discipline, and I've had conversations with colleagues, teachers, friends, who are like, great, what does that mean? Yeah, exactly. So like, what does that mean? And so it's about sort of learning, and that's where I talked about. Is there better PD we can be doing? Is there more focused and targeted areas where we can, where we can talk and learn about that? You know, is there an ever an opportunity for for a faculty book club that deals with? I I know there's some great literature around restorative practices and alternative discipline, but you're absolutely right. You hear people say that and then you're just like, well, yeah, great phrase, but what does that mean, Gerard? So I I do think that that's really important for me to hear from you and then how I pass that down and and have that be an area of support for everyone. So, thank you.
Gerard, I was just curious with the Cartwheel cap, and it's more just to kind of say. I know we're captain, you were saying that we kind of came close to to using that. And I, it's more just to encourage that if you feel the need that, because I know there's a cost associated with increasing that. But that if you feel we're getting good feedback and stuff, you know, to come back and and kind of give us the data and the information to to see as we build next year's budget with whatever that looks like, seeing as it's so successful. You know, anything that kind of can bring in that other support for staff, because I think it, that's not just beneficial to the students but for staff members knowing, okay, we don't have the bandwidth right now, but there's these other supports that we can use as well. So I think that's, that's really helpful. So.
They have a lot of great, like, community, open to the whole community, like, the cap is for the services. Students are getting the services, but being just associated with them opens us up to their resources of community webinars.
Exactly, correct.
The WA Counseling Newsletter has one, like, it seems like one a month of webinars that Cartwheel is offering that are really good topics.
Yeah, exactly. And that, I think, is is, obviously, there's no cap and there's no, that's, that's not a financial increase. But, you know, Catherine, thank you so much for that. You know, Lauren Clark is an outstanding spokesperson for Cartwheel and and how successful that has been. And what a tremendous resource that has been and the and the positive feedback she's gotten from students and community members. So I I do think, and and just so you know as well, I think it's really important, I've evaluated that too as a special education department and tried to look at grants to see if that's something we could do. You're right, and thank you for sharing it. It is, it is a, you know, it is a a bit of a heavy, heavy cost, but but that's okay, I I believe. And so if it is something that was X amount of dollars more to get double what you could have or or double, double the opportunity for referrals, then I'd love to work together with people to to find ways and and to explore ways to be able to help finance and support that. And I know Courtney's also been shared and given and evaluated the data. And and we can't say enough positive about what that's done. And.
One of the pieces that we hope is that with the addition of a potential new seeds, that we would bring that to the middle school level. And split them between the two. And one thing that I was not aware of is that once these relationships are established with students and councils on the outside through the Cartwheel, they have the ability to stay with them through the summer into their college year, you know, if that's. So it's, it's definitely, for some, have been a great experience. There are also students who have started and are already out because they feel as though that that met their needs. And so that too is a success for students that are both being referred and then leaving the services.
And I don't mean to sound hyperbolic, but if if it, if it has the potential to save students' lives, then, you know, there there can't be a cost associated with that. So I'm really, really pleased with with the results of of that. And again, that was a, that was a community project. That was everyone working together to make something great happen.
I imagine there's definitely a need for it at the middle school, considering those years, so. Definitely kind of, you know, scope that out. The other question I was curious about was the programs that you have happening at Day and Christopher Fully. The idea with them at the moment, you know, are we looking at these as like a district-wise? So if you, wide, so if you have a second grader in NAB who technically their sister school would be going to Abbott. Are we looking at, like, using Christopher Fully and Day, these these classrooms there as a way for, you know, to say to a parent, you know, this student might benefit better from this placement or or kind of how do you, is is that the hope for us longer term?
That is the hope. So our first step has been, and I know Catherine, you and I talked about this pretty, pretty significantly, both, you know, one-on-one and in group settings. You know, we really hope to be able to have, you know, titles, names for those programs, kind of ready to go. We've been evaluating. Our our teachers in those programs have had some great ideas about what to do with that and keep that consistent across the district. So if we're calling something pathways, keep that pathways from pre-K to 12th grade. And so that, that's some of that transparency I was talking about. So the parents know what that means. They know what the program is like. They know that there is a similar program offered at the next school in the transition year. But again, I know I keep using this phrase, pie in the sky, it would be amazing for each of those programs to be at every school. Right now, staffing challenges obviously make that difficult.
Even space at some of the.
Space, space is, space is another piece too. Yeah, and and for me, I appreciate that that the committee here tonight understands that. And I also appreciate that the community at large understands that. So I think we build with these with these smaller steps and understanding that, you know, these two programs basically combined are both under a year old or, you know, 14 months and 10 months old. So so in in our, again, our hope is to just keep building those and keep developing those across the, across the district. And and when we talk about like how we discuss those and how we refer those, right now, we've been trying to sort of have that become a part of the the team meeting process when we talk about that. And if we propose that, we want to be able to provide opportunities for parents to be able to observe programs. Again, in the interest of transparency, provide an opportunity for sort of, if if the students, let's say, like a rising third grader, for second-grade teachers to evaluate that program and see what it looks like. See, so we're really working together to try to have that be just sort of a positive collaborative effort. And we definitely have had conversations where maybe one member of the team thought it was sort of a a great potential opportunity, and then some other members thought, no. So I think that those are all pieces that we're just constantly trying to evaluate. And then I know for me, this is just more of a personal piece. I think any sort of special education, if you want to call it program, classroom, whatever you want to call, I don't like to identify it as such. There'll always be a a bit of evolution with each one of those programs. So you never want to sort of put into a box that this is only a program for these students or only a program for these students. Because there'll be a little bit of of a nuance with that. In my teaching career, the quote-unquote sort of like social emotional classroom has evolved over the years. It looked very different when I was teaching 20 years ago and the type of student who may have been in that program and how different that type of student might be now, but still falling under the umbrella of someone who's has a hard time with social emotional learning. So I think it's important to do the same regardless of the program you're talking about.
Awesome. Just two other things to to kind of note. They're not really questions because I I think you've done such a comprehensive presentation and I do appreciate all the work and I I've seen it in action this year with the CPAC meetings and everything. So thank you for that. But and again, maybe it's more longer-term learning. I know we've started our wish list, you know, the UDL. I do think some of that, you know, has a huge impact for our special education students. But also, I'm also a big advocate for, can we see what we can do in terms of bringing more? I know we talk a lot about bringing social emotional instruction and very specific things in. But what can we also do to change the environment a little bit more? Is there opportunities to create more recess, unstructured, at the K to five level? We know that builds emotional resiliency in kids and stuff like that. So what are kind of the sideways things we can also do? And last point just to note, I don't know if you're aware, Gerard, you. And last point just to note, um, I don't know if you're aware, um, Gerard, you mentioned about the playgrounds. Um, Mike Edwards, who's the new assistant town manager, is working on a, um, audit that's happening over the next two months within the town on, um, disability access. And it will include, um, town physical spaces as well as web spaces and stuff. So that's something to kind of connect in with him about because the, they would be kind of town playgrounds too, because they're used after hours. So just to be aware.
I had heard some, some whispers of these collaborative efforts. I didn't want to promise anything tonight or, or delve too deeply into that. But yes, that's something I'd love to be a part of.
Yep.
And, um, you know, already, uh, you know, tangibly, there's definitely sort of a committee of us at, at the school-based level, looking at, it, looking at all of that, looking at, you know, um, how difficult it is to maneuver a wheelchair over mulch or, or something like that. So what can we do together to be able to just sort of like evaluate that and look at that? And, um, and to your first comment, there was, I know we, this group talks frequently about just sort of updated, um, literature and, and research. There was a, uh, there's a piece today in the Boston Globe about the value of free play. Um, and so I, I definitely think that we could see over time, uh, uh, a sort of like push toward that as well and, and a building toward that. And that's something that I would love to include as part of, of, of special education services if we can get there. So.
Awesome. I, I am going to move us on unless there was any other pressing questions, just because we have a, a big budget. Um, we, we just have a little bit more on the, on the agenda. One thing I just wanted to end with was, I feel like this presentation is perfectly timed really because of the evolution of education, the students' needs have changed. It's different than when you went to school, when, you know, community members were trying to, to, um, share with the community what's happening in our schools. And this is a great sort of way to highlight all of that that's happening.
Yeah.
And, and I think that the, what you were talking about with like the, sort of being able to speak to the names of the programs and like being able to put that information out there, that not only helps those families and the students to make those decisions and know what's out there, but it helps us to be the spoke, the spokesperson for the, the broader community to, to be able to trumpet what's happening in our district, what costs money and what is in the best interests of our students. So I really appreciate that.
And, and I know as, is, um, as, as the leader of this department, that means a lot to me. And, and having that information out there. And I would always encourage to continue those conversations. And if, if people have questions for me, I'm always here to answer them.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Gerard.
Appreciate you.
Okay, I'm gonna move us on to the next budget item, which is me. Um, so I know you weren't tired of hearing FY25 budget on your agendas just yet, so.
But wait, there's more.
This, so, uh, to set the stage, this started as, so finance subcommittee met since, in the, in the time since the last business meeting. Um, and, uh, talked about, uh, revolving fund balances and started to scratch the surface of, um, started to scratch the surface of what that, you know, that was a big part of our finance committee conversations. Like what are the balances in all of these revolving counts? How are we using them down as a strategy? Are we writing those, these policies down? That's a big task for our finance subcommittees, but we are committed to working on that. Um, and as part of that, we had an initial conversation at our meeting on the 11th-ish.
Yep.
Um, and so I wanted to make sure that we brought that information to this next business meeting. As part of that, I'm sure all of you are aware of the misinformation that is happening in the community with the budget and the override votes that are coming up. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to walk through and put into one place, things that we have had in presentations since December from different snippets, um, and to be able to point people to one.
One-stop shop.
Yeah. Actual true information from, uh, a good source. So I guess for someone who might open this presentation and have needed like a really quick primer, um, you all know what's on the screen behind me. It's the three, uh, three increases to our school-based expenses. And obviously this is a, a Western Public Schools lens to the override scenario. But, you know, there's, there's broader, um, things at play. But for our own budget, these were the three things that affected our budget. We, um, created over the weeks of December and January. We created and got to our level service and efficiencies, um, budget of $69,716,836. That does require an override and it does have several reductions and efficiencies, um, already absorbed in that plan. Those are listed there. Then there's a no override budget for $67 million if our, um, town meeting article one fails and the ballot question one fails. And would result in a reduction of 50.4 instructional staff. We know all of those. I'll switch to the next slide, which breaks down, uh, one place of the impact of each of those changes and what they are. Um, so the, this is all information from Dr. Chu's slides from December and January. But the questions I've been fielding have been like, what's actually changing and when? And so the other piece for this is that, um, these, this, this table of changes would take place for September. I mean, there is still some conversation we might take place based on the votes and stuff. But, um, these aren't, these are not multi-year impacts. This is FY25, September of 2024, changes that would happen as we approach that deficit.
Yeah.
Um, and then I just, without getting too complicated, I wanted to add a reminder at the bottom that this is just the impact for FY25. But we know that the broader scenario does have a deficit in FY26 and FY27 and FY28. Um, and while these might not trigger someone to think that this is dire for our students, although I think we have conveyed that we, we do believe that, um, that, the, the impacts beyond that will be even, even greater in the out years. So here's the slide, um, we worked on for finance subcommittee. Um, and, uh, it's not all of our revolving accounts. It is the major ones that I think, I think the ones I looked at were like over a hundred thousand to try to summarize and make in a digestible form, because we do have a lot of revolving accounts. So one, one clarification for terms that we're using is, I keep hearing that the schools have $3 million in reserves. Um, I don't know what, where that number comes from, but I can tell you that we have several revolving accounts. And that's where we put in things that we, it, it's like separating your money based on what you, what comes in and what it's used for. So the easiest one to think about is, um, school lunches and breakfasts. Although the, the universal, um, free does limit, does, uh, it's not a great example that I just said breakfasts. But anyway, school lunch is the best, the easiest example for that. We keep that money separate. It goes towards those expenses. There are balances in each of these. These, there are rules and guidelines from like MGL that like when you create a revolving account, it has to be used for these purposes. Um, so you can't just take money out of these and use them to pay for whatever you want.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and there's also best practices for how much you should keep in them. So, for example, we learned in finance subcommittee that food service is actually required to maintain three months of expenses. So we can't just empty that even if we wanted to, or even if there was a sudden need to. Um, so the takeaway from, I don't have to go through every line by this, but I do want to make sure that there's a moment for all of you to absorb it and ask any questions. The takeaway is, what I tried to do is show that as part of our budget cycle this year and as a part of our hearings with finance subcom- finance committee, the town finance committee, we did increase a lot of these usages. So that's that middle column, the change, showing that for next year, there is an increase a- across the board that totals about 330,000 of, of increased usage from these accounts. Um, what I did add, if you can see that, the ones with the asterisks, I think those are where, where finance subcommittee reviewed this and admitted, yeah, there's a little bit too much there, right? There's, we've, that has, those balances have crept up a little bit. What's the good amount there? We don't think we have that written down yet, but we are acknowledging that there's, that's an area for growth to channel, channel Gerard's presentation.
To spin those down would be a one-time.
Correct.
Well, or, or you could dole it out.
So.
But it's not gonna, you know, in theory, it shouldn't be building back up again and replenish. You know, like, once we do that, we should be maintaining.
And that, that's the rock and the hard place, right? Is that even if you do, even if you cut all of these to the bone and you scrape together 500,000.
It buys us a year.
Well, well, it just creates a hole.
Yeah.
Um, which you will see in another slide that then you, it's one-time use, right? So it's, it's, then it's gone, the next year it's not sustainable, it's not recurring. There is.
You haven't budgeted it.
Exactly.
Upper and budget.
Yeah.
Are there like guidelines on what are kind of recommended balances for on these revolving accounts? Or is it kind of each to their own when it comes to districts?
So we've found a good model policy in Westboro. Um, and so we've kind of are working on that in our spare time. But I think, I think for a lot of these, the brief discussion that we've had as a finance subcommittee is that it makes sense to have, for some of them to have a yearly expense, um, sort of banked.
Hmm.
And, and my best example for that is elementary music. So if all of a sudden we had a super low participation interest in like a third grade, you can start with strings and then it goes up to like band options and stuff. But if all of a sudden, for some reason, there was just a blip and we got, we couldn't cover our costs. We also wouldn't want to cancel that program just based on one year either. So you do want some amount of cushion in there if it's a value of our community, of our district to say, we value these programs and offering these extracurriculars and these activities and this preschool and these music programs, that you want to have something just in case.
Yep. Awesome.
Any other questions on there? I know that's kind of, it's a new slide. We do have it as backup if the question comes up at town meeting. Um, but it, it has been a, a source of misinformation.
This is great.
But, you know, it's, it's awesome. And I suppose the other question is, you know, you're working on those policies. When do you envision this kind of policy?
Well.
Oh, shoot.
Finance subcommittee, finance subcommittee is myself and Bill and Ming Chen, who is, you know, got two weeks left of his term. Um, we are eager, but, you know.
Yeah.
Stretched pretty thin at the moment.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll keep chugging. Um, this is, this is like the, the midpoint, right? Like this is a public facing document that says our intentions. We don't have.
But if we had it by October?
It's not even, sure, maybe, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's not even totally clear what you would put in a policy versus a guideline, right? It's also a good conversation we need to have, which is, would you really put numbers in a policy? Probably not, right? So it, it probably means more like a guideline with, that doesn't have to necessarily have to go through the whole policy process. But, yeah, we can keep talking.
There are instances of numbers in policies, so.
Yeah. We can keep talking about that, but, um, the amounts could change over time, so you wouldn't necessarily.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so that's that one. Okay, so the next common question I've been hearing is, uh, well, um, the schools are like that, that we've heard this before. This is a crisis. It sounded dire in the past. I remember when, when I, when such and such was threatened to be cut and you guys figured it out. So why, why should I believe you? Like kind of the boy crying wolf scenario, this is that slide. Um, there's no easy way to, uh, counter when it's not sort of based in fact. Like I, I, I can't point to a particular year that someone's basing their perception on. But it's just a good reminder on this slide about that the budget cycle is lengthy. There are projections based in. We, we build a budget based on the governor's budget that can change over time. Um, Courtney had a great point when we were just talking today about grants, that we apply for grants.
But grants are released at different times during the school year. At some time, even though the allocation might be a small amount of money, we do receive a bump up. Um, it might be in 240 or the title, title grants or 262, um, at different times that are saying, okay, here's more money that you need to spend before the end of the year. Extraordinary relief was something that the committee had asked if we were going to apply for. And that is certainly, um, only available through special education for out of district tuition. And it is indicating that we have spent more money than what we had budgeted for, for whatever reasons, whether it was part of that 14% cost increase or whether we had a bubble of students that might have come in. Um, so we have gone through all of the exercises to, uh, present to the state what the extraordinary relief would look like as well as the new recovery relief funding that is new. Um, we have not heard back if we're going to have that money. So right now, we're still going forward with a plan of how do we budget? If the state comes in and says, okay, Westford, you're going to get another 150,000, 200,000, 700, whatever it might be.
And you have to use it by.
You have to use it by June 30th.
Right.
And so right now, we have our funding allocated up to June 30th, or we would be in a little bit of trouble. And so what will happen is a little shifting of money to make sure that we can stretch that money that is going to be provided to us and help provide some relief to the FY25 budget. So by no means is that any kind of a bait and switch. We would love it if we knew the money, the, the, all the information upfront. We don't. And so we then have to make decisions based on the timing of that allocation.
So to kind of put some of this in context, I tried to look at recent memories of budget fixes. Um, and that's what, that's why that's in sort of in quotes. But for example, in FY20, um, and I added some context there to trigger your, your fond memories, uh, maybe from our longer serving members. Um, but that year, the budget proposal was $1.2 million over the town allocation. You might remember the three tiers of reductions. At that, there was a, the, the third tier was six reading interventionists. Um, there was a adjustment to a new, new growth protection that restored those six reading interventionists. And FY21, a reminder, there was a big community, um, engagement, I'll, I guess I'll call it, about a Latin teacher. That might, someone might say Latin teacher was, that was fixed. What actually happened was that was swapped with a Spanish teacher reduction, right? So somebody might remember, oh, I thought they were getting rid of Latin and then it got fixed. That's not actually what, what happened. Um, and FY22, um, that was the four-tier busing year. So if anybody remembers that, um, we were, the original proposal was over the town allocation plus was based on savings from a four-tier, um, busing scenario. When, when the committee decided to, um, stick with three-tier, there was $596,000 of one-time funds that were used to solve that problem. And that later impacted FY23 budget pretty severely. So these are examples of what somebody in the community might see as a fix. But what I've bolded here is that none of these are the same magnitude as the deficit we're facing now. So even when the new growth projection changed in FY20, that was 132,000, not 3 million.
Yeah.
Right? So there is no, the like, like, there's no, there's no, um, uh, possibility to just fix.
The current FY25 deficit.
Yeah.
And while I, I'm not going to quantify this, so don't, you know, don't rake me over the coals for, for lack of backing it up with data. But I do also feel like some of the choices that we've had to make over the years have had some cumulative effects here and there. I mean, we haven't put into the special education reserve as much as we would have liked. I would argue that some of our contracts, while COVID gave us a reason to continue with them as they were and not necessarily reflect on is, are we investing in the future and getting where we need to be? A lot of that came due. And so I would argue that the, the things that we had to do to get by over the last five years, some of those I think had a cumulative effect to get us to the point we're at now.
Thousand paper cuts.
Yep.
Yeah. And that's a great segue because the next slide.
A magic eight ball.
Is commitment to average teach pay, which again is another source of miscommunication that I, misinformation that I'm hearing in the public, wanting to understand what contract we settled, um, the reopener language that, so a- all of us at this table are well familiar with this slide and the information on it. I don't have to go through each of them, but it is just a good reminder of how we ended up there. I did add that sub-bullet, like you said, Chris, about there was three years of one-year contract extensions. And so by the time we did a rigorous benchmarking for average pay, which I'll add is a townwide commitment across all unions. Um, once we, we, once we did that rigor- rigorous benchmarking, that's when we discovered how far behind we were. Um, and you can see the rest is there. And, and again, while, while it's hard to sort of add a fact, um, bullet to this, to this slide, I did want to speak to. I did want to speak to the risks, I think, that the committee weighs when entering into these contracts and weighing the cost of providing average pay, which is, if you don't, the morale and retention effects that that can have on your staff, right? So.
I also just want to point out, I know you have a note on it there, about the data was shared with select boards and finance committee. We had active meetings with them, so they were very much kind of partner in the process, too. So this wasn't, because that's another thing I heard, was that school committee kind of went ahead, and we were not making decisions on our own.
Right.
So I think it's important that it's out there, that we had meetings.
Yep.
And I should echo morale and retention issues at a time of very difficult staffing across the education climate.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. You're seeing my notes. Am I going on to the next one?
Sure, yep, I don't have a great segue. Another, another source of sort of rumors that I'm hearing and wanted to just speak to and be direct about is the idea of not being able to trust boards and committees and leadership with an override and what would happen to those funds. So one sort of trigger point for that seems to be the 2017 override. So I'm just clarifying that that was not a general operating budget override, which all of us, again, at this table know, but for someone at home, that was a specific override, override to raise teacher pay. And those were based in contractual increases that were all met. There's, there's no, that money didn't go somewhere else. Those went to teacher pay raises. However, at the same time, the town revenue was not as high, and the school budget did face some reductions in their operating funds. So that's why the perception could be that there was this override, and then there were cuts. Yes, that's true. And still, it can be also true that the 2017 override was targeted for teacher salaries, and the teachers' salaries were increased based on those contracts. Another sort of tangential point here, I've wanted to mention that the select board, the school committee, and the finance committee have all mentioned at various points that there is a commitment to ongoing financial reviews at a greater frequency than there had been in the past because of this situation, because of the override. Some of that will be based on the continued accountability with the Budget Task Force recommendations. But also, I really want to continue reminding the community that even with a successful $6.8 million override, there are planned reductions over the next three years. And I, I'm hoping that those kind of ongoing financial reviews can keep reminding the community that to not be surprised by these and to keep these on track and to track the reductions and the efficiencies and the accountability. Great. Another favorite talking point I've heard is about our declining enrollment in the school district. Oh, I guess I didn't finish that bullet point. Sorry. Still working on this up until the meeting started. So I'll just say that the, there's, there's two additional slides with greater detail after this, one of which is a slide, both are slides, actually, that we've, I've already brought to this committee. One shows the budget history, staffing adjustments over time since FY '15. When I add up all the enrollment-based classroom teacher reductions, I was even surprised to see the total, that we have reduced 37.8 FTEs since FY '17 for enrollment adjustments, classroom teachers. And yes, if you look at the chart, there have been additions of staff along the way, which speaks to my next point here, which is student population has changed over time. So since 2012, students categorized as high needs have grown from 15% to 27%. If you look at the, the next page, why don't you switch to the next page then? If you look to the next page, you can see where staff has been added. Quickly, you can see how quick, how much you can see the word "special education", counselors, nurse, psychologist. They're, they're reflecting the change in students that we have seen in the last 10 years. And some of the programs that have been added along the way, for example, a medically fragile classroom and program, a deaf and hard-of-hearing program. The, excuse me, our previous presentation spoke to our, I'm going to use the wrong words, the social-emotional.
SCL classroom.
Inclusive classroom. So, so even, we are making responsible adjustments to our classroom teachers because of our declining enrollment, and still, other staff are added along the way to meet the needs of our students.
And, and our ELL students. I mean, that number is increasing all the time by the looks of it.
I think that's a really important piece where the state asks us as a district to focus on these populations, and we have a commitment to that. The discussions we've heard, right, you know, when school was back, you know, the years, it's a different era now, where we have accountability standards to the state and to our stakeholders and our parents. And Gerard Coughlin sat here, talked about acuity and all the various needs and how this Department of Special Ed and SCL interplays with our district. I think just that, that facet alone, I mean, 20 years ago, remove when I graduated, I mean, it's, we've come a long way, and I think.
It's not even a moral obligation, though, it's a legal obligation.
It's legal, there's unfunded mandates. There's just, there are things that we have to meet. And it just requires a different staffing dynamic than was in place before.
And if we can pause for one moment, for each one of those services or staff members that we're adding, we also need space. And so when people think about space in the classroom, we do have to make sure that we're also having guidelines as are our students embedded side-by-side with their peers. Are they learning in an environment that is free from distraction of other populations that have needs? So they don't want to see everybody getting piled into one classroom for their interventions. That, are you delivering these with integrity and, you know, sensitivity to the students' needs? And so it's not easy to just add up student number, have a division and say, okay, you have plenty of room in this classroom, or, you know, we could close a school.
Or close a school and bring costs down.
Correct, correct.
Yep.
You might not have a full first-grade classroom, but you might have a first grader who has a tremendous amount of need and might need appropriate space to work and might need several staff members in order for that student to be able to achieve.
Yeah, thank you for that.
And Courtney, just another thing on, on the space. It's not even necessarily students, you know, who have those extra needs. Just I think how a general teach, a classroom is now working these days with the idea of having flexible working space just for our gen ed students, that you could have a group in the back working together on a research project. You might have a student who prefers standing up at times, sit there and another. So even how the classroom kind of set up.
It's not desks in rows.
It's not desks and rows.
Which is the hallmark of UDL.
Yes, exactly.
And being able to provide different alternatives for students to be successful within that general education setting.
Exactly.
If you flip back this, oh, maybe refresh? I just filled out that last bullet.
Oh, okay, hang on.
So, yeah, there you go, just pop it back up. So, thank you for connecting that to facilities usage.
Yeah.
Admittedly, we don't, there's, I don't have at my fingertips a nice dataset chart like I do for the budget history, or we'll go to the, the following slide with the student needs over time. But we do know that the SMMA study did not find space in the buildings to move central office administration, which was one of the core asks of that study. We also know that in our most recent business meeting, when we reviewed the strategic district improvement plan, year-one review and year-two action items, that we added, we, with Dr. Chu collaboratively added an action item for reviewing utilization of buildings. And sort of, and just anecdotally, that's a very complicated thread with redistricting, utilization, maybe start times. Like, all of those things are complicated and are, are all intertwined. We're not shying away from that conversation, but it does take time.
We're in the middle of it. I, I think that, that's been one of the really frustrating conversations I've seen, and that's really out there, about we could just close a, a school building. I mean, we're currently in the process of working with the MSBA to figure out what does that, our buildings, look like. I mean, there's, and there's the potential for an amalgamation or what down the line with MSBA. So it would be really, I think, short-sighted of us to start talking about something now when by this time next year, it's, it's a process we're already kind of in, and we're, this is really the data gathering mode. It's been a very frustrating.
I'll see the goalposts, yeah.
Um, point out there.
I'm just going to keep moving us. Slide nine is the chart I've shared here before, which shows that over the last 15 years, I think.
2012.
Uh, I'm blinking, yeah. Can I do that math quick now? That, yes, by grade level chunks, the enrollment has gone down at different, different rates, but has declined. But meanwhile, our high-needs percentage has increased. And just a reminder that that is a definition from the state for either low-income, economically disadvantaged, English learners or former English learners, or a student with disability. So our, our, just to tie all that together, our students have changed. And, and you, you can stop there. Yep. So.
You did, you said backup, and you actually backed up.
Yeah, there you go. Did what I'm told, Tom.
So again, that, the, the nut of that was a finance subcommittee where we started to revolve, to review the revolving funds and accounts. But I wanted to broaden that up, as this is.
Playing threads.
Well, I, I keep, I keep getting asked questions for clarifying, and.
Very good and concise and helpful.
It needs one place to live of showing the common talking points.
People at home hopefully are screen capturing this right now on YouTube.
It will be in the, added to the meeting packet. As you can see, I was finishing it up right up until today, but, yeah.
Can I just note on, on, on this one thing, and this is me just, you know, taking a moment on a personal observation, the, the idea of this kind of distrust in that we've, we're a group of seven members. Finance Committee has nine, I believe, Tom. Select Board has five. I mean, we haven't arrived to this number and this need with, like, one personal opinion. And one of the things I have found is, is having so many different conversations with different people, everybody is saying, well, if I was doing this, I would do X, Y, and Z. And they're all giving different viewpoints and different opinions. And I think people are maybe losing sight of, this is kind of a collaborative process. We've all come together. What you might think is the right answer is not necessarily what I think is the right, exactly the way I would do it. But I think people are losing sight of, this has been a collaborative process where we, we are trying to be mindful of all, you know, groups in, that use the time. And, and that's been really frustrating, I think, that they think it's a black-and-white issue when that's not what this is.
Doctor, you were going to add something?
Nope.
Okay.
Just thinking about, I'm two agenda items ahead.
Um, so.
Be present.
I wear it on my face.
This will be added to the meeting packet, I'll send it to Kathy. But I just thought, all the, it's sort of a frequently asked questions based on the school topics that we're hearing. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the academic coach job description, which was part of our previous meeting. Any feedback was asked to be shared with Courtney directly. And if all looks good, we'll be ready for a vote tonight.
Right. And just as a reminder, this is an update to the position itself. So regardless of any budget decisions, the academic coach position had to be updated.
Because there's others in the district.
There's others in the districts, right? It was previously, we were saying that they needed to be certified as a teacher, and that's not the case. And it was more geared to just the middle school level and working around executive functioning. And so this job coaching, job description really embraces the fact that we would want somebody who would be, might be able to do literacy, numeracy, or executive functioning. Would we have somebody do all of those? Probably not. It depends on which position we are hired for. Example, the Miller School right now has a Title I academic coach. That individual is working with kindergarten math intervention, and that's it. The middle school academic coaches continue with their executive functioning role, while the day school has more of a literacy focus. So it does give us a little bit of wiggle room. We feel like it captures a lot more as it falls under the Unit G contract. And so if there's any questions.
Any final thoughts? Great, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the academic coach job description.
Thank you, Bill, and a second. Thank you. Any last? We're all in favor. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, almost back on time. It's up to you, policy.
Now I'll be present. So we are at the third meeting and the, would be the second reading of the six policies that we brought initially four weeks ago. I guess first, I would move that we waive the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
All those in favor? You made the one.
You're still the chair.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
So I do want to note that there have been some changes to the policies, the ones you see in the pack today. Some of them differ slightly from the ones from two weeks ago, and I want to highlight those changes.
That'd be great, thank you.
We will go through one by one. In 1505, which is the reconsideration policy. Pull it up myself. So this would be, there's somebody who wishes an instructional material, library material not be in our schools for some reason. There's a process outlined wherein they would make that request to a school, and there would be, the principal would then convene a committee to look at that. We added, we didn't dictate who would be on that committee. We, we said it should include, at a minimum, a classroom teacher, a school library media specialist. That's what we had. But then we also added a parent caregiver, caregiver, caregiver slash legal guardian from the school advisory council. And this came about, somebody mentioned that the school advisory councils are a great resource. It's already a group of parents who are active and interested in the schools. We felt, we did feel it was important to have a parent sit on that reconsideration committee, and that'd be a great place to pull that from. So we did add that to that.
As a former SAC member, I appreciate that.
There you go. Okay, that's the only change there. 61018, there's no change. 6119, which is our selection of instructional materials. I have to see what we did. Hold on, I have the note here. We changed the word in, yes, in item six, there's a list of criteria that should be used when selecting materials. We pulled this from the Model Policy, MAC Model Policy. On number six, we changed, it said something about the special needs of students. We changed it to learning needs of all students. Magali Rodriguez Ronan suggested that was, you know, a change there would be good to be even more inclusive and use up-to-date terminology. And we also added evidence-based supports to that line as well. And that's the only change in 6119. I am going to move on to 6121, which is our Teaching About Controversial Issues slash Controversial Speakers. Under Teacher Plan Classroom Instruction section, we added, we had a public comment about, I, I don't remember the exact question, but like, the age appropriateness of, of teacher plan classroom instruction. And it should be age-appropriate. And we had a conversation and decided that a better way of saying that is that it's aligned to grade-level curriculum. Since different people could have different ideas.
Sure.
Each is appropriate, yeah. So we're going to, we're going to lean on the curriculum in that case. And we also, in that section, added, I've got to find that line. Wasn't it in that section, where we had the federal and state?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, in the next paragraph, sorry.
Yep.
That, we, we had said something about meets the, the district's curriculum standards or something. And then, again, coming from a conversation with Magali, we added local, state, and federal, because as she pointed out, sometimes those will be, well, we have, we have to.
Supersede?
Yeah, supersede, we have to comply with all of those. And it's good to just spell that out and lean on all of those. Not a big change, but one we felt was important to make. to make. 6122, there are no changes because we are pulling that policy because it's merging with 6121. And then 6123 has spawned a lot of discussion in the past week, unfortunately. Part of it due to our chair sending sending us the form.
Oh.
Spawned some of that conversation.
Fifth grader.
Yes. No, no, it's actually really good. And what that led to was reaching out just this morning, because this all came together basically on Friday. And we had an email back from Brian Rourke, our curriculum coordinator, asking that maybe we want to pause and bring this to the next meeting because there might be a little more discussion. And I thought I was I was kind of stressing all day, like, we're going to be making changes on the fly, perhaps, you know, tonight, or we.
That's how we do policy.
Well, sometimes we do. Well, hold on. Hold on before you say that. So I would maybe suggest we do that. We just give it one more meeting and give us enough time to just there were three basically, three outstanding questions that we wanted to get some feedback on because there were some discrepancies in what the policy says with what the form that that you provided that goes home to families for the growth and development.
Yep.
Yep. And so that if if that's okay with everybody, we would we would only presenting the other five policies. The other thing I would also add that we might just discuss very briefly is terminology about the people who work in our school libraries.
So hold on. Let's 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 see if there's any other thoughts on 6123.
Okay.
So we can like kind of move that aside or not.
Yes, please.
And then take the rest of the bulk together.
Yeah, thank you.
Is everyone good with that to wait on 6123?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, same. I agree. Okay, thank you. Sorry. Now we can.
So our policies, you know, a lot of these are old. They have a mishmash of terminology, but librarian was commonly used. It was suggested maybe we do like library and library media specialist. Is that the more up-to-date term? Is that general enough? Is that too specific? Again, we've had some conversations the past few days that have made me question what we want to put there. And we don't want to be overly prescriptive. We don't, you know, somebody said, do you want to put certified library media specialist? And I said, I don't know that we do because we may have somebody working in there that isn't that we still want to, you know, they still have authority over what books maybe gets selected, that sort of thing. Do we say library staff? Because I think some of the folks who maybe are working in our libraries maybe don't aren't considered a library media specialist. Looking at you, Courtney, like, do you have any guidance or suggestions on on the use of terminology that would be accurate, not overly constraining and respectful of the positions?
Always leaned on staff, you know, in special education, especially when there's like an overarching team that whether it's speech pathologist, and you can have a licensed speech language pathologist assistant that might be part of your staff, or a Coda, a certified occupational therapist assistant, you know, that's still part of your occupational therapy team. So I would I would lean on staff.
Library staff.
I agree. Yeah. I feel like my only experience at the K to five levels is seeing a collaboration, a really strong collaboration partnership between the librarian and the education support professional that's also in that in that room and and leading classes and everything, too. So I think that that makes sense to just say library staff.
I think so, too. I think that's and it it prevents us from over-constraining things unnecessarily.
So is that an I make a motion to refer to to use that phrase?
Yeah, I would.
Amendment to.
Yes. I mean, I think if we have an emotion to if somebody wants to move to approve the five policies, and then somebody could move to amend.
Oh.
And replace all references to librarians and library media specialists. Should just be library media specialist.
So moved. Does that cover us? I don't know. He did the work. So are they separate? I to me, it makes.
Do it as one.
I think you can do it as one.
Yeah.
Unless there's a real problem.
We're we're making a motion to approve the five policies, not including 6123.
Correct.
And the amendment to make all references, say, library staff where appropriate.
No other changes.
Okay.
Sean is giving you the second there.
Catherine, second. Okay. Any last?
Let's go first.
Okay. All in favor? Awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, policy subcommittee. My undying gratitude.
That's that's the last policy. Well, no, you'll get one more.
Apparently, we're not done.
Maybe 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 May 6, we could we could sneak 6123.
Yeah, yeah. 6123, definitely.
We're meeting on the second.
We are.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Yeah. And a second?
Second.
Okay. And any last thoughts, which is see everybody at town meeting on Saturday, hopefully. And there's an election coming up. Candidates Night is on Thursday. To tune in and learn more about your candidates.
And it's here in Millennium, if anyone wants to be here in person.
Right here.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of adjourning?